All right, Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Here, Mr. Kizer.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
He's here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
All right, council, you received the minutes from the September 22 meeting. Questions, changes, or motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kizer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
You also received current expenses. Questions?
See, we bought salt.
That was probably what it was.
Water, I think.
Water.
Oh, okay. That's not road salt, then.
We did, however, I'll get that.
The self-insurance, the municipal, is that by annual?
The joint Ohio, or is it the lawsuit?
Is that the new one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That pays us up till April of next year. That's like on their timeframe, from then, from April to April. Okay, it's eighteen, yeah.
Motion to approve the expenses.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kizer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Great, council, we're moving visitors up in the meeting this evening to address leg hole traps. We have three entities here this evening who want to speak. On behalf of their, the entity that they represent, the first one that we have, that we asked to come, is SCRAM, and I believe that is, is that Adam?
Mm-hmm.
Adam's at the back, okay. Adam, if you wanna stand, or if you wanna move forward, you're fine to do that.
Yeah. Just address everybody to that point, if you don't mind. First off, thanks for having me represent the Ohio Wildlife Center. If you're not familiar with the Ohio Wildlife Center, we are a local wildlife rehab facility. We've been operating for about thirty years. We also have an education facility and do provide nuisance control in a non-lethal manner. So, we provide goose mitigation using dogs for the zoo, for the city of Dublin. We also provide services to pick up sick or injured animals for the city of Dublin as well. And then we also run geese for Franklin County Water Treatment Facility at this current time. So, we do offer alternatives to what some of these other guys are able to provide, but still able to offer solutions for the homeowner when they have nuisance situations, either in their attic, underneath a deck shed, or a porch, in wall cavities, a sick or injured animal in their living space, or in their yards, or common areas. We would be able to assist with that. So, our arm of the Ohio Wildlife Center, again, is called SCRAM Wildlife Control. We've been operating for about fourteen years and currently service about six to eight counties within the central Columbus, Ohio area. I'd be happy to address any questions, specific questions you may have.
Okay. Clarifying questions? No real discussion there?
Is there a cost associated with your service?
There is a cost associated with our services. That would be dependent upon the situation, the immediacy of the situation, and/or if we're scheduling out ahead of time to book a job down the line. So, there are fees associated with our services. However, if you come across sick or injured animals, you can admit them to our facility at no charge. We see about five thousand animals a year at our facility with the sole purpose to rehabilitate and release back into the wild. However, nuisance animals cannot be rehabilitated. So, in those situations, we would offer other solutions for the homeowner if they're getting in a structure or underneath a structure.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Dave Finkert.
Well, thank you, Dave.
You were with, tell us who you were.
I'm with the Ohio State Trappers Association. I'm a trapper and a farmer from Xenia, Ohio. I deal with animals all the time, not only in my professional capacity as a farmer, because we have a lot of nuisance animals. If anybody here is involved in agriculture, you understand that. Couple of problems that my organization has with what you're proposing is that, one, you're trying to supersede state laws that have been established, tried and true, due to process, parameters established by the Ohio Legislature. Then the Ohio Wildlife Council is the board that actually takes those recommendations and passes different changes within that structure each year. The other is the issue of coyotes. And I think Dirk's going to discuss a little bit more about how they can be a very real threat as opposed to the perceived threat of the foothold trap. Again, there's been no, no instance that we've been able to find anywhere that a foothold trap has ever harmed children accidentally by being set in somebody's yard. It just doesn't happen. That is a perceived threat. However, the coyote is a very real threat, not only to pets and livestock, but also to people. If you think coyotes are just a rural issue, I would suggest you contact Ohio State University, Dr. Stan Ginn, has done a very extensive study on the urban coyote. And the way they did this study is they captured these animals with foothold traps, radio collared them, released them back into their, you know, habitat, perfectly unharmed. The traps were set properly, the foothold traps, they don't do damage to the foot. And then they track those animals. And it's been very interesting to see how much interaction there is right in the urban areas with coyotes. And a lot of times, if a pet disappears, coyotes can be responsible for a lot of that. Now, where does this get us on what you're trying to do here? The cage trap is ninety-nine point nine percent ineffective in capturing coyotes. Maybe one in a thousand will go in a cage. That's been our experience. I know trappers who have tried capturing them in cages, making different types of cages, trying to do anything they can. Coyote's a very difficult animal to capture. So, we need those other tools if you're going to try to manage any problem coyote populations that might be here. So, this ordinance, if you pass that, would eliminate all these other options. You need all the tools in your toolbox sometimes. Again, if you have any questions for me or my organization, feel free. We're available for any time. I have the phone number and contact information for anybody that would like that.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you. All right, and then Dirk. Shear?
Shear. I've been called worse on both the two sides of the jury. I'm gonna pass this out. Now, I do apologize, folks, but I'm actually more nervous talking to you guys than I've been talking to the Senate and the House that I've had to testify in front of. There's a much more intimate atmosphere than what we're used to. Normally, I get big easel and stand up there and get to talk to everybody. But I actually tried to put this in a format so when I state this stuff, you're still gonna have the information in front of you when you guys are making your decisions. So, I'll try to not be too boring in reading it verbatim, but I'll probably end up doing that anyways. Okay? But, Mary, council members, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. I'm Dirk Shear. I'm a small business owner, I'm president of the Ohio Wildlife Control Operators Association and the Wildlife Control Company. A wildlife control company, we actually service your community, along with, basically, SCRAM is one of our competitors. And the Ohio Wildlife Center, let me say right out, they do a wonderful job in rehabilitation. Okay? We do compete on jobs and we do approach things from a different perspective. Okay? Our job, our first responsibility is to our property owners and the people, not to the animals, because we're trying to protect the people's property, protect their health, protect their safety, protect their pets. And that is our first responsibility. It is not to the wild animals. So, I'm gonna just say that from our different perspectives here. I'm also a graduate of the High State University, I'm a former Army officer. The Army says I'm a disabled vet, but I argue with them on that. But we'll have to agree to disagree on that. As I understand it, the proposal that has been presented is to impose a twelve-hour check rule. Any trap other than a live cage trap would be unlawful. Once caught, an animal must be provided food and water until released or euthanized. Okay, now, am I correct in that, so, or that's the information that I was giving you?
Well, we have a draft document that, where our solicitor just tried to capture some of the things that council said they were interested in.
Okay. In reviewing the minutes of the previous meetings, it's apparent that this has become an emotional issue, and I'd like to simply present some facts and information to help you make an informed decision on this issue. One of the concerns is children's safety. Okay? And Dave touched on this, but I've never heard of a child being injured. So, I Googled "child injured, leg hole trap, Ohio." Came up with absolutely nothing. Okay? I did Google "also coyote attacks," and came up with a lot. Okay? Now, nationwide, it's quite a bit. Ohio, I think there were just two instances, that there have been instances. But it is considerably higher in states and municipalities that have banned the use of, the proper terminology is foothold traps. I'm using leg hole traps because that's the way it's been presented in your minutes. Okay? California, Arizona, some of the areas that ban these types of traps, the incidences have gone much higher. The concern for child welfare is obviously admirable, but the perceived threat of a foothold trap compared to a known threat such as threats from coyotes, removing one and not taking the other one into consideration is just illogical, in my opinion. Okay? We don't have any instances of children ever being injured in a foothold trap that I can find, okay, in the state of Ohio. Okay? Another concern is capture pets. In looking at your municipal code, this issue really should be a moot point. Okay? In Chapter 505, Paragraphes A and D, they should prevent any animal, any pet, being running around unsupervised or on someone else's property. Paragraph A reads, "No person being the owner or having charge of cattle, horses, swine, sheep, geese, ducks, goats, turkeys, chickens, or other fowl or animals shall permit them to run at large upon any public place, upon any unenclosed lands, or upon the premises of another." Keep in mind, our businesses are working on private property, for the most part. Occasionally, we do have municipal contracts. So, if an animal is caught in a trap on someone's private property, that animal, the owner of that animal, is in violation of this code. Okay? Paragraph D states, "Running at large of any animal in or upon any of the places mentioned in this section is prima facie evidence that is running at large in violation of this section." The onus for the well-being of that animal is on the animal's owner. Okay? It is not on the person who set the trap. They are in violation of this section of your very own code. Okay? Let's move on to the twelve-hour trap check rule. Currently, Ohio Revised Code, and the Administrative Code require traps to be checked daily. And knowing the habits of the target animals kinda makes this, just not make sense at all. Okay? If a raccoon's living in a chimney, they're gonna go in in the morning, say six AM. They're not gonna come back out till ten AM. If you check the trap at eight AM, the animal's not even gonna be out for fourteen to sixteen hours. Same way with the squirrels. Okay? So, checking the trap on a twelve-hour basis just doesn't make sense. I mean, how many of you here own dogs? Come on, raise your hands, or cats, or pets. Do you feed your dog every twelve hours, or do you feed him once a day? And if that food, you feed it once a day before you leave for work at six o'clock, do you feed it again by six o'clock, or do you get home and work at ten and maybe feed it again if you're on two feeding schedule? That dog's only getting fed not every twelve hours. Is this gonna put you in violation of not taking care of your animal properly? Okay? It just, that just does not make real good sense. Okay? I mean, it's nice to think about it that way, but in reality, these animals are either nocturnal or they're diurnal, so they're not gonna be even foraging on their own once every twelve hours. Okay? This proposal of a twelve-hour trap check, I don't know that it's based in any scientific necessity, and it places undue burden on your citizens. Okay? It's gonna make nuisance wild animal services prohibitively expensive, because we will have to come out and check those traps two times a day, essentially doubling our costs to your citizens. Okay? In requiring a provision of food and water, I kinda wanted to add on the dog issue. Okay? It's just not gonna, it just doesn't make sense to me. Furthermore, you also have Section 505.071, Paragraph C, Subparagraph 2, which addresses the treatment of companion animals during confinement. The concerns regarding food and water are already codified in your municipal ordinance, and creating a separate ordinance only uses the water makes enforcement issues more difficult. Okay, you've already got it there. To put it someplace else where it may conflict with one another is gonna make an enforcement issue. Which one are you citing under? Do they agree? Is there gonna be a legal ramification if you do prosecute someone and then they go back to this other code? Okay? Once again, that's not based in any scientific or biological reasoning. Okay, let's look at the restrictions of live traps only. Page five, for those of you following here along. Okay, we've dealt with a myriad of situations where cage traps were not the best option. All right? In codifying the cage traps only, you will stop anyone from legally removing wild animal by the following methods: captured by hand, utilizing a snare pole, utilizing a throw net, utilizing a pole net, darting an animal, snaring an animal, utilizing a collarum-style trap, which is very effective for canines. I know the Union County Dog Warden has contracted with me to help her with skittish dogs that cannot be approached using a collarum trap. We wouldn't be able to use that here in your municipality. Snap traps for mice or rats. With cage trap only, you're not gonna be able to use snap traps. Clutch or spear-type traps for moles. Any of you folks have bluebird nesting boxes? No? Well, sparrows get in them all the time. People use a trap. It is not a cage trap, it's a nesting box trap. Okay? It's not gonna be food and water in there either. Bell traps for birds to prey. If you have a hawk, or a falcon, or any other type of animal in a building, these, you use a mouse or something in it, and it has little loops all over it. Hawk or owl comes down to catch it. You guys use them, don't you?
I assume you all mind by hand.
Okay. Well, they come down and they get the loops cut off.
They're very effective.
They are very effective. Okay? So, we wouldn't even be able to use that tool. Okay? Bodyguard traps for beaver or muskrats in the water. Foot decapitating traps, and the biggie, the foothold trap. Okay? Unless you define...
I don't think our proposed litigation sought to restrict to live traps only. Well, I mean, you're saying this is off-topic and misrepresented what we were actually trying to do.
Okay, I'm going just from the minutes that I read. This is the thing that I had traveled.
It was just not saying live traps only, so...
Okay.
That's not really...
All right. Well, then, if I misrepresent it, that's fine. It's just information I'm giving you from the information that I had. Okay, obviously, I wasn't at the meetings. So, unless you define animal correctly, even Japanese beetle traps or yellow jacket traps might be made illegal. Okay? The next paragraph might, going back to what Mr. Kennedy said, we may not need to address this, but you don't wanna limit tools that can be used to achieve a desirable outcome. Okay, just like a carpenter, you don't tell him what hammers he has to use. Okay? I've got concerns with Section 505.11 also, where hunting is prohibited. Okay? In Paragraph A, it says, "No person shall hunt, kill, or attempt to kill any animal or fowl by use of firearms, bow and arrow, air rifle, or any other means within the corporate limits of the municipality." First concern is two specific portions. First, any animal. Unless clearly defined, which I couldn't find it in the definitions section, this ordinance may prohibit the killing of rats or mice, insects, or other things. Second is any other means. Essentially, if you hit an animal in your municipality with your car and you've killed it, you're in violation of this ordinance. Okay? And furthermore, higher Revised Code and Administrative Code require killing those animals are primarily vectors of disease. And it includes raccoons, possums, skunks, fox, coyote, and beaver. It's illegal to translocate these species. And if you take any of those species to the Ohio Wildlife Center and declare them as a nuisance animal, those animals must be euthanized, regardless of whether they do it, the homeowner does it, or another company does it. But it is required by law. There is no option. It is state law. Okay? I think that that section may have originally been adopted to more or less address discharge of firearm. And you may have that in another section of the code. I didn't get into that. But if that's the case, maybe remove the hunting portion and the killing portion. Just take that out and go with the discharge of a firearm for safety reasons. So, I'm assuming that that's the case. Nuisance wild animal control operators are regulated by the state of Ohio, Department of Natural Resources, and the Division of Wildlife. We're required to take a training course, required to pass a competency test. We have to be certified. We have to purchase a license in order to conduct business. So, we are all familiar with these regulations, what we have to abide by. And an argument that I hear often is that homeowners don't know the law. Just passing a law like this will not make homeowners know the law. If they're already in violation of state law, there's nothing to make them be aware of a municipal law that's on the books, too. So, in conclusion, I believe the concerns voiced from the proponents of this proposed ordinance are already addressed in other areas of the existing Municipal Code and State Codes. And adding further restrictions on managing wild animals that are causing damage to personal property and impacting the safety and welfare of your citizens would only make it more difficult to resolve these conflicts. And additional restrictions will also have an adverse economic impact on your citizens. So, I'd encourage you to look at the facts presented and forego passing additional restrictions to resolve these conflicts between the animals and your citizens. So, sorry for the lengthy part, but there's a lot of information I wanted to add. Are there any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have been discussing this topic since July, and it's time to wrap the covers. You've got a lot of information before you, you had a document that was just a draft that Paul brought forward to... So, I think we have a couple of options here. We can ask him to take a minute at this and have him make some changes where we feel comfortable moving forward with it, or not. Or, as we've heard, we have a code that addresses it. We may need to make some changes to it. ODNR has guidelines, state has guidelines in general. So, that's your pleasure.
Well, I don't know if it's wise to have Paul spend any time and money if it's a waste of time. And I certainly don't get the feeling that Leslie and I, his opinions is shared by the rest of the council. I guess we have to hear from everybody. If that's the case, then I don't wanna spend any money on Paul doing anything that at the end of the day doesn't result in anything. So, y'all know where I stand on it, but I'm just one of the six, so...
I agree with...
I think we want to get a new one.
What do you want to vote on?
On this issue, up or down, one or the other. We vote for this and say yes, or vote for it negative?
Well, you have to have something to vote for. So, either we vote for to change, update the document in hand, or let's table the discussion. We're not getting anywhere by this back and forth. Back and forth. Back and forth.
I'm going to table the discussion and rely on our current ordinances and Ohio Revised Code.
I would like to, you know, I understand, and you know how I feel about it. If we are gonna go ahead and permit this, I'd like to at least see some type of amendment that if you are going to have a leg hole trap in your yard, that there'll be some guidelines, that you have to notify your neighbors in writing, you know, maybe a sign be posted just for safety.
May I interject?
We are not gonna do a back and forth, I'm sorry.
It's already law that you have to notify.
Right.
The second Bob's motion.
What's that motion? Table discussion, rely on current code.
Yes, the municipal and state.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kizer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
I'm not really sure what we're voting on. I mean, if Mr., I'm sorry, Dirk, what was your last name?
Shear.
Shear's representations are correct. It's illegal to hunt within the village, so if we're gonna rely on that, we're relying on, we have statutes that are in effect in conflict, so I don't know that Bob's motion accomplishes anything. We just rely on what we've got.
It's a motion, so...
All right, well, then, no.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
No.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, I would suggest that we therefore take a look at our code and see if there can be some adjustments made to make it clear so that we don't have conflicting information in Section 505, which Mr. Shear recommended. So... We will take a look at that.
Does that mean we can hunt in the city?
I'm sorry?
Does what he's saying mean we can hunt in the city or not?
No. And we're not gonna get into that discussion tonight.
No, I understand.
But I don't believe that's what he said was meaning. But we will take a look at this and see if we can't fine-tune it a little bit, get to a better place. All right. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. Appreciate your input. You feel free to leave if you don't wanna hang around for the rest of our meeting. You don't have to be. All right. We had two other people that wanted to speak this evening. If it's on leg hole traps, we're not addressing that any further. That's finished. But Chuck, did you have anything else?
Yeah, one of them was going to get our prairie grass outside of town that was supposed to get in the state.
You know, we have asked him how many times. Let's do follow-up on that. We've been, we're working with Mr. Valentine now because of the property right beside the park. And so, he's the one that actually owns the other side of the road. And we'll check with him again and see what's going on there. But you're right, that's absolutely right.
And what about the seniors' elevator or steps out here? What are we gonna do about that?
Easily accessible. And if they would like to come to a meeting to give us a call in advance, then we would work to change the location for that meeting. We do not have the funding right now to put in a new elevator. We've tried to figure out a way to put in a ramp around the building, come up with some other solutions, and we've not been able to come up with that. So, we have, that's how we address that for now. Do you have anything else?
Pardon?
Did you have anything else?
Yeah, I offered to fix it a year ago when Mr. Hilbert was here.
Offered to fix with a ramp?
Yes, offered to fix the elevator.
It was my understanding you offered to...
Take that one out and repair it and fix it. And Mr. Hilbert said he wants to do it, so my offer's no longer available.
Oh, okay. So, I thought your offer was to help us build a ramp.
I'll help you that, too.
Well, it, there's not...
Where are you gonna put it?
Right, it doesn't, it's not...
That's why we need to fix the lift. For somebody really complex.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Medici.
I was just stopping by to see if there was any update on the phone line issue. I know that Mr. Vaughn said he had a meeting scheduled for last week. I was just curious if any headway was made. I'd still like to get my building painted, but I can't get in there. I didn't know if you guys had had any luck.
We thought that we made some changes over there. We did not? It was our understanding that they came out to your building and made a couple of changes.
No, you have to go look at it.
Okay.
They...
All right.
Actually, he refused to move any lines. I was out there painting the part of the building I could get to when they arrived, and all he did was try to stuff the wires in those little boxes to make them look better. He was told that's all he was allowed to do. And I asked him, I said, "Can you at least remove the lowest line?" Because it doesn't attach to anything, it's cut off at the telephone pole. He says, "Oh, well, if it's not hooked to anything, I can remove that one." So, basically, if I hadn't been there, they wouldn't have done anything with it. So, basically, if I hadn't been there, they wouldn't have done anything with the wires. But the other three are still completely blocking, there's no access. They have not addressed it at all.
We can have that conversation again, and then Kevin can be in contact here if you want to do it.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. All right, Renee, Chief Hare?
We had a couple events over the last couple of weeks, both went well. We had the four mile walk and run, that went well, as well as the homecoming parade. And addition to that, the police department had a two-day training seminar that was held out at the Pleasant Valley Fire Department. It was for self-defense and subject control training. It was attended by approximately thirty officers within the two-county radius here, so I want to specifically thank the Ohio Peace Officers Training Academy for sending their mobile instructors out here for free to conduct that training, and also want to thank the Pleasant Valley Fire Department for permitting us the use of their community and training room for two days. And then, as well, I want to thank the Union County Sheriff's Office, the Madison County Sheriff's Office, the West Jefferson Police Department, Richwood, and London Police Department for sending personnel to this training. So, it was well-attended, so that was good for our agency. I attended a Madison County prosecutor luncheon in West Jefferson, and then last but certainly not least here is we just want to pay some condolences here over the last six weeks or so. Officer Greenbaum, you may have heard, and his family, Officer Greenbaum lost his grandson. And I also want to give condolences to the Hilbert family, former police chief, Hilbert lost his mother. And then as well, to a former police officer with the Plain City Police Department was Harold Vance, he was a captain here back in 1990, he had left. And his son Scott, I actually worked with him, he worked here as well, and he's with Delaware County now, but I want to pay condolences to them for the loss of their father, so that's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
All right, Mr. Vaughn?
To report, we did receive, or we're in the process of receiving 100 tons of salt thanks to the Union County engineer. They're selling it to us, but we received one truckload today and hope to have the rest of it in by the end of the week, so we, that'll get us about halfway to where I'd like to be, but do appreciate their assistance on that. I also want to publicly thank Chief Kit of the Pleasant Valley Joint Fire District and Brad Gilbert of the Union County EMA. Both of these men were an enormous help and asset during our system depressurization a couple of weeks ago. I know nobody really got a chance to be with us that evening, but with those guys' assistance and having them sit in my office at two o'clock in the morning was extremely comforting, and had this thing gone worse, and for a long time, we were prepared, and the residents of Plain City were in very good hands with the resources that we had available to us that evening, and I just appreciate all the work and support that they showed to us. I'd also like to thank on that, on that very evening, I'd also like to thank Officers Howard and Officer Flowers for their assistance that they provided above and beyond their capacity, so if you could pass that along, Chief, I appreciated their assistance.
Yeah, I did pass that already after our conversations.
Unless there's any further questions, that's all I have.
How are we doing on the water, the painting and the water?
We're doing good. Blasting agents and debris got sent out, I just got the reports back today, everything looked good, so they can move forward with going into the painting process.
Couple more weeks?
I'm anticipating two weeks.
And then they do the other, has the other?
The other one's done, Jefferson is done.
Outside too?
We're not doing the outside of that.
Thank you. President Grantin?
Anything on the parks? Yes, parks met, I think on the 24th of September, and I think everyone got a copy of the minutes, but I just wanted to touch on a few highlights for everyone, and that generates some discussion. There was some talk in the committee about Mr. Vaughn's request, when there's a larger group that uses the park, and how that might, if it's council's pleasure, I guess, trigger a new fee structure or require them to rent another part of the park. Sometimes people might have a family union there or a special event, and it's just two or three hundred people in one little small area, it's kind of taxing on the trash collection and all that, so I think Mr. Vaughn is working on developing a new fee structure, help me if I'm off on this, a fee structure that would help us control the cost a little bit more and at least cover our cost when families or whatever would rent a certain section, and it gets a little bit bigger for that section. There was some also talk about Vicentino Park, and Mr. Moore and Mr. Vaughn are going to be checking into cost on fixing that, it's starting to crumble, and we need to get on that as probably as quickly as possible. One other thing was in the minutes that I wanted to bring up was the, right now, the park rules are kind of freestanding, and it's becoming more difficult for us to enforce some of the rules and the laws of the park, in the park, so I think there's this movement, at least on the committee, and maybe we should just think about this and maybe Kevin can bring it back at some time in the future, but actually codifying into our ordinances the park rules so that it makes it easier to enforce. I know there's some incidents there, you know, I think alcohol or beyond, when the park closed and it just, residents were upset, and it was difficult for the village to enforce those, since they're just, the park rules are not necessarily the codified ordinance of Plain City, so that's something we're kicking around and just think about that, the cons and the pluses of doing that. It would also help with campground enforcement when folks are actually squatting in there and they haven't paid, so that's coming down the pipe here in the next couple of months or two, if everything goes the way that Kevin would like. And finally, the, and I don't know the protocol on this, but there are a couple citizens who would like to serve on the park committee, and I don't know that we need, if we need everyone to vote on that, or if I just need to bring it here, or I don't know, I've never been in that situation, but Tom Jaskiewicz and Bruce Cornett would like to serve on the park committee. They've come as visitors for the last few meetings, and they're helpful and passionate about the parks, and Tom is involved with the baseball association and softball association, so that might be a good connection, so I just wanted, I don't know the protocol on that. Do we just vote on that, or we added our pleasure, is there a term, maybe we can check into it, or what do we think?
Yeah, I don't know, we don't have any set terms for the park committee, and I think they would have their pleasure, if your committee's pleasure, how many people want to have on there or not.
That would bring the total of four residents to council and Kevin, so it's a good number, and it's a good problem to have people want to be on, so. Okay, so we'll make room for them, and they will join, if you can make that reflected in minutes, and I think that is about it.
Are they doing anything about the restrooms?
Well, yes, it's on the plan. Oh, that's one of the things, I'm glad you said that, Chuck. One of the discussions was developing a park master plan, figuring out what are our priorities. There's a lot of things that can be done in past time parks, there's electric lines that are old and outdated, and we have to figure out which ones are the best, which ones don't work anymore, that costs money. Figure out how to do the restrooms, whether we add on to the youth building and create a new freestanding structure. These are all things that would be part of the master plan for the park, but we're open to suggestions from the council, but, you know, as money is tight, so we're discussing all these things, we're open to it, but there was no recommendation to council for the restrooms. Was there something in our budget for the following?
No, that was one of the items deferred for this year, or for 2015, excuse me.
So, it appears anyway, we're going to have to with porta-potties for the time being, which run us about 3,000 a year, is what we pay for three, so that's where we are right now unless we all change our mind and act on it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hilbert?
I've been working on a number of letters. We've sent out letters to residents that are not in compliance with zoning. There are a couple of them that are multiple offenders, and we may have to take some court action on those individuals. A couple other, there's one individual that partially responded and partially did not, so we're going to try to get them to comply, but there's a couple that have been flat out non-responsive, and we may have to take it to the next step and actually enforce it through the court system if we don't get any response. The other thing is, I am finalizing and have at least finalized a rough outline of the property maintenance code for providing that to planning and zoning for our discussions on Wednesday. Again, much like the legislation here that we talked about with the leg hole traps, it is kind of a, it's an outline of, here's kind of a big list of all the stuff you could have in there, and now it's up to P&amp;G. I mean, I don't draft the law, I mean, I drafted for them, and you guys pick and choose, so it'll be up to P&amp;G to determine what they want and have been there and heard in there and recommend on to council. You know, there are some things that, that I know that this, you know, for the benefit of this council, I know one of the things that we were concerned with is that we didn't have in our existing ordinances enough really kind of enforcement teeth to some of the issues, and I think as far as fines and things like that, we've upped the ante on those types of penalties for continuing violations. You know, again, the council, I don't think the council, the village wants to be punitive on people that have elapsed and, you know, they didn't mow their lawn, and they didn't take care of a fence that's falling down, and they get notice of it and they take care of it. We don't want to penalize people for being good citizens, but we really do want to penalize people that are not being good citizens and that are being non-responsive, and I think that this bill will address that. The one limitation that we have to keep in mind is that we do not have a building department, and that's going to be an issue that's going to have to be brought up to P&amp;G. We don't have a building inspector, and we don't have a health and safety inspector, those are county positions, and so if there is a structural safety issue, or if there's a health safety issue, those are going to be things that have to be referred to the county, they are referred to county now. We don't have the authority to unilaterally take action in absence of some finding by a building official or by a health, a safety official as to any kind of property or building concerns. That being said, we can include that in there, and I've put that in there, where we can, there's the option to contract with a building inspector, and I know a number of municipalities and communities in political subdivisions do that. Again, it's a cost issue, and that's something for everyone to consider, but again, those are kind of the sketch of some of the things that we're looking at with planning and zoning, and then they'll make their recommendations on that and pass it along to council.
Have we had issues with handing this off to the county in the past, non-responsive issues, or just timeliness, or?
You know, I haven't, I have not been brought in on a particular situation where there's been a concern about a building or a structure. I know that some concerns have been brought up, the county has come out, I don't know, you know, some of the, like, where the bricks were coming off of the back of buildings downtown. I don't know everything that happened with that, I know the county came out and looked at it, right?
They came out and there was a resolution to the, to the brick issue.
But I don't think anybody's ever said, we would like the county, you know, I shouldn't say that, I'm sure it's been said before, not while I've been here, but somebody needs to go in and inspect this building because we have a serious concern about its structural integrity and for the safety of the citizens. I don't, not while I've been here, does that come up. If that comes up, then obviously we pass that along to the building department of whichever county the building lies in, and then they have to come out and they have to do their inspection, and I don't know that we've had an issue with that.
Didn't we just have that with North Avenue? Mm-hmm. Yeah, they came out, and that's why it's having to be fixed.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so they are responsive, so again, you know, these are just options I'm throwing out there for everybody to consider.
They're pretty responsive.
Okay. It works. Good. I think that is it, that's all I have.
Okay. Meeting's over. We meet Wednesday at 6:30. You think the BCA? No. Kevin, CIC?
We did have a Madison County CIC meeting, and, excuse me, in that, we did announce that Stanley Corporation is adding another facility in London that'll bring well over 300 jobs to Madison County locally. I've met with David Kell the last couple of days in working on what our steps are going to be once we start developing Valentine property, and having some small discussion about Uptown and some grand thoughts on that. Union County meets in Tubus.
I also emailed David Kell about Crawford Whym, and I haven't heard back, I just did that. But I, if we're really going to consider this, we need to address it, we can't keep bringing it up, not doing something. So, I would recommend that you have a work session and kind of hash out exactly what you want to offer and how to make this happen, because again, there's going to be a financial commitment, there is a lot to figure out, and I think that you need the time, not in a meeting like this, but in a session where you can really just talk out what it needs to look like and where it needs to be applied and how we're going to go about it. That if Mr. Valentine is willing to move forward, then we need to be able to offer him something that makes it a viable project for him, and the same for anyone that has been looking at Uptown, so that would be my recommendation to you, just try and come up with a date.
And we are, we are awaiting a meeting with Mr. Valentine, we've asked him to sit down and go over and finalize some of the real estate transfers, and we're going to start some discussions of what's needed moving forward.
I would suggest you ask him what his thoughts are as far as content of a TIP agreement, what would he like to see on it, rather than just working in a vacuum as council, at least have some kind of an idea where the developer may be coming from.
And we could do the same for Crawford Whym, couldn't we? Yes. Definitely. A TIP in the Uptown, I look a little different, but yes, if they, if, one of the things that I asked David was because Crawford Whym put, like, I haven't been here, but three or four suggestions that would help them, and I just was looking for feedback from him, what his recommendation would be from those suggestions, and then yes, absolutely, if they can narrow that down for us. Okay. Okay. Fire?
Well, I heard a lot of talk about fire.
Yeah?
Last month, they spent $5,242 on maintenance, working on pumps and stuff like that, and then spent $484 on fuel, you know, $1,700 on fuel, they used 464 gallons. And they had 32 fire runs and 84 EMS runs, but the biggest thing was the open house yesterday, and then they built the statue of Aces, so now you can look out the front door and let's hear a statue on. And we had, they had a real good turnout, and the farming right now are working on passing out things for our levy, but they should try to get the levy passed. Other than that, I don't know what else to say.
You missed the most important.
Same here?
Well, the second most important, that Pleasant Valley won the chili cook-off Saturday again, two years in a row. Chief, thanks for being here, and thank you, your department's been mentioned several times tonight, and we do appreciate the cooperative effort between the fire department and the village. Thank you.
It seems to be working quite well. As Mr. Moore mentioned, obviously, our levy is coming up, it's very, very lock-in step with what we've done for the last 22 years. I want to offer that opportunity, if there's any questions or concerns that anyone might have, as I stated a long time ago, I'm going to try to get here at least once a quarter, and that was that magic once a quarter, at least that way you can see the face, you can know who to call when you got a question, or if you have something right now that you want to throw at my, my direction, that would be fine as well.
Okay. Thank you. I see Mr. Rucker here this evening, anything for a pro?
Not this time, no.
Okay, thank you. All right, we, I kind of skipped personal finance just because we're going to address budget stuff here in two minutes, so is that all right, Chuck?
Sure.
All right, moving on. The third, we have in our business, the third reading of ordinance 614, which is the pool bond refunding.
There's anything change? I know we were worried about fluctuating.
Actually, I just got emailed from today and they said actually the rates have dropped just a little bit, so.
Excellent.
Yeah.
With that said, motion to pass ordinance 614.
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Okay. We have, you, they received the email this afternoon, right, about the infrastructure for Copperfield? Is that what they received this afternoon? And we handed it out. If you want to glance through that.
No, we'd like to see the budget, the 2015 budget this afternoon.
This came this afternoon.
That's just an attachment to the...
Yeah.
Yes, file. Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah.
File, file.
They just got tonight, the budget, the 2015 budget tonight.
Okay. So you did have the document for acceptance of, I'll read it. A resolution accepting dedication of roadways together with public easements and utilities within section three, phase one and two of the Copperfield subdivision.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Is this the original phases? This is not the one that's just finished?
This is the final phases that, that Homewood is just finishing up. They've got a couple of lots that are still available, but all the infrastructure is complete. Staff actually did all the inspection on the roadways and utility lines. Homewood did come in Friday and Mandrel tested all of the pipe. It all came back without incident, so everything looks good and John and I both recommend acceptance.
No questions? 1614 resolution. 1614 is the resolution.
Motion to approve resolution 1614.
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
I'm staying.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Okay. We also have a budget amendment, which is resolution amending, we have an amendment to this. 1014. Amending resolution 1014 establishing the final appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the village through December 31, 14. Is this? Just to give that. Yeah. So we've talked about this before, but this was inspection fees that Homewood had paid upfront and we are returning to them, which is, some of it was used, but it's, we're returning 52,895. And this is, that's a huge one to ignore. Did we get that one?
Yeah.
Did we get this one? Is that today? Or not today?
No, we got it.
Yeah. It was earlier today. So it must work, so we can get a chance to read this. Sure. Yes.
I can give some brief history on this if it helps. The developers always, we get a bond, a performance bond upon the start of the project. Once all the infrastructure is in, that bond is returned and then they go to a maintenance bond. And this will happen to be returned to them. If it's any unused inspection fees, we hold that money and use it for that purpose. Their maintenance bond is just simply a irrevocable letter of credit that will be placed in, in our name. And that'll be for, is it two years? Two years if there's any failure of, of the infrastructure. Kind of your two-year warranty.
So do you have a motion for 1714?
I'll make a motion to approve 1714.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
I'm staying.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I think that we are ready to move to personnel finance and so council, do you need more discussion or are we good to move forward with ordinance for temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the village through March 31?
I do have one question. Why are we approving what Bob put together and not what's in actual, what will be in the actual village? Shouldn't it come out of the village?
Yeah, I'm sure it should.
Actually, this has been transferred to the village and this is an attachment that will go, be attached to the ordinance.
To the ordinance, but it's not the actual village's report that's coming out.
No, I've been introduced as, as a member of council to the village.
Not clear what year.
These sheets here, Colleen, were provided by the department. Now, it's all's I did is summarize information and reference the appropriate village account numbers and crunch the math.
But isn't that put into the village's system?
Yes. It will be, Renee will load this.
In January.
In January.
But it has to be approved by the state requirement, is that what you're referring to?
Did Ed answer your question? Okay.
I still have the same concern that I had at our last meeting, which is, it seems to me that there are excess monies in some departments where there are not in other departments. And we are considering hefty, hefty raises. Three and a half percent across the board for everybody but the police, and then for the police, some six and a half percent on average. But if you look at some of those officers, they're getting a, a raise of some 10-plus percent. And we're not spending money on fireworks, we're not spending money on capital improvement plans, we're not spending money on a whole host of things. Bathrooms are waiting a year, yet we're handing out 10-plus percent raises. I have a real problem with that. I know that we talked about the percentage-based budget that would allow these department heads to do what they want, but that's not what I envisioned personally. You know, 10% or more raises as, as something going forward. One year doesn't make, doesn't justify that to me. So, I mean, those are my concerns last week.
So do you, how would you, what's your recommendation in adjusting that and making that, where it's more acceptable to you?
Well, as I said last week, I think that one of my recommendations was, we can keep the percentages, but to have a cap on that money, specifically the way it's set up, the police is receiving, the police are receiving much more than, for example, the other departments of which Kevin is over. And the police also have a much smaller need for capital improvements, whereas Kevin has almost five or six times the need for capital improvements within the village. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me that the police have so much while Kevin, the other departments have so little. One of my recommendations, one I have now, is that we cap the extra money over and above the percentage that takes care, takes care of the appropriated dollars. I forget what we're calling that, help. And then have that spill over into lands, buildings, streets, where there's a greater need for capital improvements.
Which also goes back to not having a strategic plan or something.
Yeah, exactly. There are a host of things we're not spending money on, yet we're giving raises. And while we all love everyone who works here, I mean, handing out raises after one good year or a projected good year, doesn't make any sense when we're, we are foregoing those things. I don't know that it can be solved in one more meeting or right now, Mayor. I, I brought it up a couple of times last meeting, there was really no debate on it, but I would love to have another sit-down because I think it's going to take more than 10, 20, 30 minutes here. I get the sense that there's a lot of diametrically opposed positions on this. Maybe there isn't, I don't know, but...
I agree with that. But you would have another meeting? Mm-hmm. I think we didn't really need to have some kind of plan to say what we're going to approve or what we're not going to approve for a year or, you know, to look at what we're supposed to be doing for the next three to five years to be able to plan that out. We can't go and approve everything if we don't have a plan put together in a strategic way of looking at it.
And also, if we're going to deal with Valentine, if we're going to deal with Crawford Hill, the TIFs, we don't know what kind of money we may need for that.
Yeah, but we won't have those answers right away, either. Right. Nor can we have a strategic plan put together within a couple of weeks that...
No, but we've been, I've been bringing it up since the beginning of the year and we keep ignoring it.
No.
So when are we going to do something about it?
Well, you said you would sit on a, on, head a committee for comprehensive plans if, if your job settled out and...
It hasn't. But there's six other members that could also volunteer their time. I'm not the only one here. And quite frankly, it's this body that should be coming up with that plan.
Then if you want it on the agenda, you need to hear that. We can't, we can't, or if you want a special meeting for that, then we need to hear that.
I brought it up at our work session, did I not?
And we did talk about it and we talked to a number of things. We documented it fairly well. And as a group, we said, are we okay to go forward with the preliminary budget? And everyone said yes. And I won't say another word.
When's the deadline for all this? When do we have to have it voted on, sealed up?
December 31st.
So we need three readings of it before...
30-day term.
Or what happens?
Well, we can't any bills.
Could some of Nick's concerns be addressed after the fact or is this something that has to be part of the, because I understand what you're saying and I agree to it to a certain extent, I guess. Is it something we have to, because I don't know all the nuances of it, but I see what you're saying between the two sides of the house. Is that something that we could tweak afterwards or is this the percentages and the raises and if there's carryover, what we do with that or?
Well, listen, we put an email out that Ed made some sense last week, and I suggested we go forward with the first reading and that, that maybe discussion less warranted based on some of the observations she shared with council. And that that could be done between the first reading and the second reading without putting the brakes on 100%. There's no, no reason that there couldn't be a modification by council between first and second if it's based on a bona fide reason.
So when do you want the next meeting?
I'm fine with that idea, but that places a lot of pressure and on is on us to get everything worked out before the next reading, which is in obviously two weeks. I'm happy to do that, but I think we all need to understand that means one meeting, two meetings, three meetings, I don't know how many meetings, within the next two weeks to figure that out.
Well, there's only four meetings left through the end of the year, so we have to, it has to be in place by the 31st or we don't pay bills. Nothing, everything comes to a...
Well, that has to be in place by the first.
Before, yeah.
Before the first, because we have to have 30-day term, so it's got to be in by December 1st.
Yes, so that means we have two meetings tonight and two more meetings, the two meetings in November. So, and that's true, we usually, well, a lot of times, haven't always canceled the last meeting in December and that's too late anyway, so.
Just as a point of information, the comprehensive plan that was passed in 2003 took about 24, 18 to 24 months to come up with a concrete, good, executable comprehensive plan. The village really did execute the majority of that. To assume that we're going to take two weeks and come up with a, a strategic plan, I don't care if you're in the public sector or the private sector, you don't do something like that in two weeks.
You could narrow down more things that you want to target and look at, which you've been doing and through this budget process you've done that.
I didn't take your concerns, Colleen, to mean that we had to have a comprehensive plan within two weeks. Just where, if any, money we're going to spend on that particular issue within that budget for 2015, which I certainly, certainly think Bob is something we can figure out within the next two readings.
So...
You agree?
You've got it, Bob. So we need a motion to pass the first reading this evening for this ordinance to be able to get it moving before, so that it can occur before the end of the year or we will be in emergency status. And this is resolution 1715, 1814, sorry.
I'm okay with Bob's recommendation, how I do think we need, there are several items that need to be discussed in the...
Okay. So then, let's talk about what those items are to get a list, so we have it ahead of time before we go into the next meeting, so we know what those are and can be thinking about those. Yep. This is resolution 1814 and ordinance for temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the village through March 31, 2015. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
I'm staying.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
I'm staying.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right. So we have some items. Yeah, I met with Josh last, a few weeks ago to actually discuss comprehensive plan. He also do, does several other things and I sent you guys the information in the email with that. Kevin and I are actually meeting with him on the 22nd of October to go through a little more of that and he's supposed to be bringing in some costs as well as to work on that, so. Any questions though, or any questions you'd like me to ask him, please let me know.
One thing, there was a high degree of community participation in the comprehensive plan in the 2002, 2003 timeframe. I'd be interested in his opinion of that.
He does all of that actually, and he does the surveys and the social media, social networks. He does several different outlets to get the communities involved.
Okay.
And so currently in the budget that we just passed, there's no, is there any money set aside, like, for something?
We put, we budgeted $5,000 for legal cost for TIF development agreement, but we did, we did not advance the economic, or the comprehensive plan. And I put comprehensive plan update, economic development focus, and that fell below the line, so it was listed... And that fell below the line, so it was listed at, I mean, we quantified what we thought it would cost, but we listed it as unfunded for two thousand and fifteen. So between now, uh, and the second reading, if we've got a number and we decide that we need to bring that one forward. The opportunity's there. Unfortunately, the fifty thousand was in two thousand and three dollars, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping you get a good relationship with this gentleman.
Well, he comes from Plain City.
Okay.
He grew up in Plain City, um, his family still lives here. And, um, so he has invested interests, um, but he also has said that he's about half of the cost of the normal families, so. Anything else on this list? The complian, tips. And I heard you say fireworks earlier, did you know that was?
I'm not saying that's one of my concerns, I'm just saying we are going without, um. I think we already had a kind of a wish list created, like Bob created that.
But you can put fireworks in there.
Okay, so we'll go with that list, let's look at dates. Are you available or another meeting?
Well, next week I'm out of town, so I'm out the whole week, so. But, you know, if you need to meet without me, that's fine, it's good. Will this be a work session? Is that what we're thinking it's gonna be, or will it be a special?
I think, I think it should be a work session, in that way, if you move beyond the boundaries of budget, you can have the discussion. Because in a special meeting, it has to be for what you identify it for.
Well, technically, any work session is a special meeting, anything that's not a regular meeting is a special meeting. So you guys would have to define to some degree what the scope of the work session would be. If it's budget, you can say budget, if it's budget and personnel, budget and whatever you guys can do that.
Future planning.
Right, but you have to, you have to stick within the confines of that for the purposes of the special meeting. You couldn't go in there and have a budget issue and then talk about a disciplinary issue on someone, or talk about some other legislation that has nothing to do with the budget.
Well, if it's a line item that's in the budget, we're one we're considering that topic.
That topic of budgetary issues, right.
It's pretty all it goes to.
Yeah, yeah, just.
But it needs to be before the next council meeting, so that pretty much.
Ideally, yeah, and I'm gonna need a couple of days depending on what changes to update the files.
Do you wanna do it, just do it in a regular meeting?
What are our next, what's, what's our, our meeting schedule through the balance of the year? Can you?
The date?
Yes.
October twenty seventh.
Uh-huh.
I skipped that on my count. Um, November ten.
Ten.
And then twenty-four.
December.
We have to have it passed.
By December.
By December, by that meeting.
By December.
December one is gonna be passed, so.
December twenty-four is the date.
This may seem like a silly question, we've not done this yet, so I apologize if it is, but we can pass ordinances, resolutions, whatever, in a special meeting. Right, and we don't have to do it on one of the regular scheduled meetings, so if we have to call a meeting for December first, that is an option.
But twelve one's our due date?
Yeah, that's the last day you can pass. You need to have the, the thirty days for a referendum.
Yeah, we had actually planned to, to wrap this up and we put the planning schedule together to have everything finished by the tenth of November was our target.
What does the, oh, you have some. Do you want to make that the topic on the twenty-seventh? Change up our regular meeting and?
I prefer just to have a meeting just devoted to that, I think. We would be better off.
I think it's important that you're all here too.
I'm sure.
So.
We don't have to do a readings consecutively. In other words, we don't have to have the second reading on the twenty-seventh. We could have the second reading on the tenth and then third reading on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
All right. So we can have that meeting anytime before the tenth.
So you're suggesting a dedicated meeting between the twenty-seventh and the tenth?
Something that would work with, with Sean.
Yeah, how about the third or fourth, one of those days, Monday or Tuesday, November?
Either one would be fine with me.
Jim, third or fourth, we're meeting in November? So which is your preference?
Monday or Tuesday?
Let's do, let's do the Monday, the third.
Okay.
That sound good? And you wanna do our six-thirty time? Work session with the parameters being budget, personnel, comprehensive plan? Is that?
Sounds great.
Does that cover everything? Pretty much everything falls under the budget anyways.
Yeah. Those are all actually listed in the, like you thought, it's a bit, so.
So then with that, we would not vote, have the second reading then on the next meeting of council, we would then?
We do the, uh, tenth.
Well, I understand if we, in the logjam, we may have to have a special meeting, which would require, you know, some funds to cover that. That comes from somewhere, but maybe it's necessary. So, November the third, six-thirty, here in this room.
Okay. We've pretty much worked through our agenda, but we wanted to also talk to you about the audit that took place. This is something certainly we've shared what's going on before and we need to finalize. So, um, auditors have finished and Renee, you'd like to review that for us?
A whole working manner, perform the audit, they've actually done the audit for the village in the past, so they're familiar with our procedures and systems. They didn't provide an actual report, they thought it'd be a bunch of mumbo jumbo. So here is the actual, the documents that they've tested, I'd be more than glad to provide, you can all take a look at this if you want. This is the actual reports that they've looked at, they've highlighted. First and foremost, they did not find theft in any of the accounts that they tested. Uh, they tested between twenty and twenty-five accounts, so they could, they said that they'd be here for months and months and months, and they tested each and every one of the accounts. So they just pulled twenty, twenty-five accounts, they tested family members, they tested accounts that maybe Kevin and I, um, looked at. In the end, it looked to be about six thousand dollars difference, instead of the original eighteen thousand dollars that looked to be about off. So, six thousand dollars is a lot better than eighteen. We could have a fraud audit done on the account if we would like that to be done. Uh, I checked in about that, it's anywhere between twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars for a fraud audit. So, again, that's your assessment, I don't wanna make that call. There were so many unapproved adjustments, write-offs and write-ons that she did not have authority to do. Back in two thousand and twelve, I attended a auditor state conference. When I walked out of there, I was told to talk to the village administrator at the time, to have all adjustments initialed. He asked her to do that, she did, started having the administrator at that time, not Kevin. She took it upon herself when Kevin came in to no longer have that done, Kevin was not aware of that, um, policy. Just to give you an example, you'll see that in here, that Steve left in April, Kevin came in May and two thousand dollar, and I'm sorry, in May. She wrote off, which a write-off means that she supposedly filed with the county, uh, two thousand dollars in write-off and bad debt. She checked, our auditors checked with the county, there was no debt filed with county in two thousand and thirteen. Not sure what happened to that, we just don't know. We have on our system, and have had on our system for several years, eight, uh, users. How do I get this right, Kevin, we have eight?
We have eight customers that have water and not sewer.
Correct, right, so to me, eight should remain, remain the same. Every month, we have customers that go to Florida. So I know our water user should go up and down, but eight should always remain the same. That does not always happen, and I don't understand why, but sometimes we have twelve more water customers. Sometimes we have sixteen more water customers, I don't understand. But it should always remain eight. Our water usage goes up and down, I have not had a chance to meet with Wade over that, he's sitting in the back. One of our highest, um, water usages is in February, doesn't make sense to me, I, but maybe Wade can, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Wade, but that doesn't make sense to me, doesn't make sense to you, I mean.
No.
No, so, there, it's just, there's a lot of things they pulled. There was write-offs on the accounts, she, she had. And then people would come in and make payments and she would write off, she would adjust off, she, there's so many adjustments.
Without explanation.
Without explanation, there's no notes, we talked to our current, um, utility clerk, Kevin, she has no authority whatsoever. To, um, do any adjustments without initials, and that's what the original policy is, is that she has to have initials, has to have authorization, she has to have notes as to why. She's adjusting accounts. So, going forward, we have put, well, we have asked for our current cash management policy, we do have a current policy. We would like to have a new current cash management policy to compare to, to see if it's any better, any worse than what we currently have. Kevin has, um, put in the budget for a camera on all cash, because as we all know, cash is a weakness. I'm not saying that there's any, but it's a weakness. We can also consider not accepting it, cash, I'm not saying we should or should not, that's just, and we have not implemented with that, that. The UAN system, which is mine, and the utility billing system has to balance monthly, and we do.
So the, and the auditors providing another.
Cash management.
Cash management policy first of all.
Were you not balancing during that time though?
With Keller?
Wouldn't that be a red flag of not balancing?
We, I was, that was the whole, we were, she was, we were trying to.
I have a question, how much money are we talking total?
This is a council decision, I am, so I'm sorry.
Okay, how much money are we talking total?
What do you, what do you mean, talking?
We're, we're, we're off six thousand dollars.
That's unaccounted for, correct, when I say unaccounted for, which means that my initial concern was that I had. When I said the water revenue had dropped and our sewer revenue had stayed the same, which doesn't make sense to me. I mean, like I, my initial concern was that, um, by eighteen thousand dollars. And, uh, when they said they've gone through it and they did the beginning of the year versus the end of the year revenues and stuff, and they did all that. It was a six, they felt it was about six thousand dollars difference. And they felt that was, that it was unaccounted for.
Unaccounted for from the twenty to twenty-five people they pulled, or total?
Total. The twenty, twenty-five people they accounted for, they had, they did cash payments all the way through, I mean.
How can we, you made a representation earlier that this wasn't theft, how are we so sure of that?
The twenty to twenty-five people that they pulled, the businesses, the different people that they pulled. They saw no theft in those accounts.
And they, they can't tell from all those adjustments, that they're, they can't make rhyme and reason from it. If, there's so many, that's the back and forth, so.
So we don't know, it might have been.
We don't know.
And how many accounts?
Nineteen hundred.
So.
About eighteen fifty.
What was the end date for which they moved?
Uh, they did, uh, they did all two thousand and thirteen.
Renee saw a serious discrepancy in about October, or something, in, in last year. And had to wait, didn't have to, but felt like needed to wait till the end of the year, when the year was closed out to see if it, well, it was a discrepancy or not. And so that's when all this started. So, that's our report and, um, we have not, we have closed out.
We have not.
Had a close down.
No.
Can I offer just one? We, the village didn't wait until, you know, midsummer or anything to contract this per, uh, this party to do the audit. I visited with Renee and, uh, the mayor, and I did an audit that I. A layman audit, I'm not an accountant, but I couldn't, I, I tracked every monthly summary showing what the daily deposits were. With the deposit receipts in the bank, day for day. And, um, I didn't see any financial, you know, gross financial discrepancies. And I also said the review excluded, uh, utility billing system adjustments, write-offs and return checks. Since the transactions were too difficult to reconcile. In other words, it was, the problem resided within the, I think, the billing system.
I mean, there's examples in here of just. Of adjustments, she would do adjustments and people come in and make payments on accounts that she wrote off. So then she'd have to write the amounts back on, and Wade didn't make the full payment, so she'd have to write some back off and.
You believe that we have the necessary tools in place now to prevent these difficulties and reconciling these accounts?
And, and we did before, as we shared, um, I think the change of, between administrators, there was. An lapse and then. That allowed for some things to, so, you know, in doing this, I'm not trying to defame anybody. I'm, we're simply trying to share information. Because we don't have all the answers, this was inconclusive, it couldn't tell us, we wanted to know it was their theft and it's, and then they couldn't tell us that, so. Had not it, and we got some answers, and there's two or three things, um, what like we said, they're going to. Provide us with a different cash policy and maybe it'll be better than what we've got, we don't know that. And the security system, so. We don't have many other options there, but we have not closed out the audit, just in case you wanted to do something else or thinking something else.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, it is.
Do you have anything you wanna add?
Good that it's less than what we thought. But, um, yeah. Regina is very, um. She has a great handle on this software and this program. And she is clarifying everything down to minute detail. And she's getting no cause from people asking for, well, I used to not have to pay that, or I used to get a two-week leeway, or, and she's. Nothing is permitted outside of what our policy is. And there's been a lot of ruffled feathers and we are dealing, still dealing with some of those. But we feel comfortable with where we are at at this point. And any comments or questions?
I, I guess I just don't understand, when you say write-offs, she would look at someone's account and say, oh, they still owe seventy-five dollars. And just write it off.
Right.
Give them a zero balance, that's how it appears.
I mean, and there's examples that you can look at in here as to what was, and there's no reason to do that. Because we have, as a village, we have the means to either one, go back on the landlord, cause if it's. we have the means to either, one, go back on the landlord, because if it's a rental property, go back on landlord and collect the debt, or two, we go back on the property tax and place it on the lien, property tax and collect it through debt. We have resources to collect our money. There's no reason to write it off as bad debt. And why, we, in May of last year, she wrote off almost nineteen fifty-two, one thousand nine fifty-two.
Were any of those, were any of those folks asked? I mean, I'm assuming if the way that would take place is she would be handed cash, not give them a receipt, pocket it, write it off.
I doubled, I went back and.
Is that being the case, were any of those folks talked to? Hey, did you ever miss a payment? Did she write this stuff off?
I went back and double-checked a lot of the, the write-offs, because there was, they pulled the five largest ones that she wrote off. There was numerous ones, but I went back and double-checked to see any of the payments to, if they were cash payments, check payments to see, and most of them were check payments that they had paid, but then, like on one person, I'm not gonna name the name, but the one person, she had in July of 2012, there was payment, there was a charge, there was adjustment in September, then there was a write-off in May, then there was a write-on in December, and then there was another payment made, I mean, on just one particular account in four months.
So it went from 2012 into 2013?
So when she would do a write-off, who would authorize that?
No, but, I, Kevin and I both have to, when we do write-offs, we have to go to the county. I mean, that's, they asked me, they said, so how many liens did you file in 2013? And I pulled my paperwork out, and I said, none. They said, well, according to her system, you have two thousand dollars. I said, no. And I asked Kevin, I said, do you have anything? He said, no.
So that's an official way to handle.
That's the official way.
Now, in that system, you have the ability to make adjustments, and that's what transpired. They weren't done like they were supposed to be.
But weren't you curious when all of a sudden he stopped?
In 2012, we had three, so it's not like we have an exorbitant amount, I mean. So it's not like we had twenty-one year and zero the next year, that would raise a red flag to me, so. I mean, it's not like.
I think when we were looking into this, I think in the beginning of, was it this year, 2014, when we were first looking into it, I think part of the struggle was, is that there was almost impossible to follow the documentation. I think that was the struggle, that there was just no rhyme or reason to some of the documentation in trying to figure out exactly what the numbers were was a struggle in and of itself, let alone the system and methodology that was used.
They tried to get to balance with her, that's, it was.
How long did she work for us?
Seven years.
And we gave her evaluations periodically?
She reported to state, did she? She reported to state?
Yes.
Would anyone like to see the book?
This is the only copy that I have, but would anyone like to?
So, Mary, you feel like we tightened it up enough that this kind of thing would be extremely difficult to do again, and it would raise all kinds of red flags?
Yes. Yes. And of course, when you go through an audit, you look for recommendations from those who are doing the audit this morning. Got three. Any other questions, Sarah? Comfortable with us moving forward and closing the audit out?
Yeah, I am.
All right, that's what we'll do. Great, does anyone have anything else? Motion?
Motion to adjourn.